All this meeting to order, I know that Councilman Martin, he had some family business. He said he may be a few minutes late and don't know where Councilman Boone is, but I'm sure he'll be here momentarily. Now, let's go ahead and get started on work session, Agenda Item 1, an update on Restore Act Sewer Project. Mr. Andy Bobey. What's the name of that engineering company again?
Dooberry.
Dooberry.
So, I guess we'll skip to the next agenda item.
All right. Well, if he shows up, well, the next agenda item is committee updates. We're gonna go through, we can go through the agenda as we get there as well and wait on them. Jimmy, you have any committee updates?
I have no updates this time.
Okay. Jay?
Me neither.
I know the Airport Authority meets tomorrow afternoon and of interest to everybody for that is an item, I believe, to consider a 2% airport tax for sales at the airport. And so that could be sales of goods or sales of services and that income would go to the Airport Authority. This is not unusual for airports to have this. I know Gulf Shores, they're comparable airports to Fairhope. I know they're much larger, but as comparable as we can get nearby, they've had this for some time. So, I'll keep you updated on how that discussion and vote goes tomorrow. A lot, a lot going on actually with the airport. You may have remembered me speaking of building some hangars, the Airport Authority building hangars on the east side. I talked about it several months ago and as you all know, construction costs have skyrocketed and so we're, we're still looking at that and trying to see how we can make that financially feasible. There's numerous, numerous ideas being considered, either in lieu of the Airport Authority doing it, the city helping them out as far as, you know, maybe giving them a loan or cosigning on a loan or ground lease to another corporation to build them and us just collect the ground rent. So, a lot of things being discussed. Councilman Boone, you have any committee reports?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Let's go ahead and leave it in Department Heads. Richard, since you're up front.
Nothing major to report other than the agenda items. Do you want me to go ahead and go into those or is that premature?
Go ahead while you're up there. Richard, if you don't mind.
Because a couple of them do need some discussion so you kind of understand what they are. I'll quickly hit the ones I don't think are gonna be too, too much talk. Number 12, again, we're rejecting bids on roll-up doors for fire station. It's just a matter of fact that we got, we got them opened and then the, the winning bidder came back and increased prices and said his manufacturer had increased prices and he was passing on and we just can't do that, meaning that, that either you honor the price or not. So, we're asking to reject that and rebid. Number 16, I think is a no-brainer. This is the jail doors. It is a change order for a credit back to us of 22,000. That's the good kind of change orders there, just to close that project out. Number 17, as you know, y'all authorized us to move forward with some NRCS emergency watershed protection projects. This is kind of the, the next phase of that. This is the surveying for the work that's been done on North Summit Street as well as Big Mouth Gully there at Fairhope and Fairwood Boulevards. And that's just a, an extension or a appendix to, addendum to the engineering contract. Then number 18 is the award bid for the Fairhope docks bulkhead repairs and the mayor wanted me to kind of explain what that project was. Joe, do you mind putting that up there? As you know, this has been a lagging response from Hurricane Sally. We went out for bids, did not receive bids, had to rebid it and we did finally get two responsive bidders. We have three areas of damage. One is just a complete wholesale failure there on the eastern part of the, of the property where it's going up Fly Creek. Then in the green that's on, on your screen is what we're calling a type A repair. That was some, some subsidence of the, the edge docking there, pretty minor, but we want to address that. And then the type C repair, that is the, the inner harbor there, what they call C dock, that is not only bulkhead, but it has an edge dock that goes around the whole perimeter that then assesses the different boat slips and finger piers. If you'll go to the next slide, Joe. Just the type A is just getting that back up to grade and resetting that. It's pretty, pretty minor, but 125 liter feet. And this is mostly located along the covered slip area. Next slide. This one's kind of the, the no-brainer. This is that east side. We just literally had a complete bulkhead failure and that will be brand-new construction, 125 liter feet and includes two replacement finger piers.
Richard, do any of the finger piers are any of those changing location or will they be put back in the same location?
We're calling it to be put back as built, but again, if the Marina Manager says, hey, it would be a little bit better to equalize these, you know, the bid includes one, two replacement finger piers. We really can put them anywhere we want, but the drawings show them basically going back in the same location.
I just didn't know if it'd be more efficient to take a look at that now before they get started and see if, you know, are they underutilized, they overutilized, you know, can we squeeze another slip or two out or, you know, just, we kind of know, I know that Sean knows our client base there and then I'm pretty pleased with these prices so, and it wouldn't be much to add a couple of finger piers, you know, if we needed to, I don't think. And now would be the time to do it and, you know, if, if we're adding additional, the income from the additional slips would offset that pretty quickly, if, if that's even, may not even be feasible, but.
It's absolutely feasible because we got unit prices by square foot and by pile. So, we know how much one would cost us. And then if you'll go to the next slide, this is part of the C dock. As you can see, it's pretty, not only did the bulkhead shift, but it pulled away and caused the edge dock to fall. Next slide, Joe, and that's looking back out toward the west. FEMA covered all of this. Just so you know, this project worksheet has gone kind of in advance of the project. It has gotten through environmental review and we're just waiting on obligation. So, we're, we're getting funded on this and I think when I talked to the treasurer, our numbers were like 368 is what we've been approved for in the project worksheet. Is that right?
I have that.
Okay. We'll have to adjust that. If, if the project actually is a little less than that, then we'll, we'll, we'll correct that because FEMA only reimburses for what actual costs are. So, that's, that's the good news and this is what that project is. And, you know, the, the good news here is when this is done, just about 100% of the bulkhead at Fairhope docks will be less than seven years old. So, because if you'll remember, the previous tenant did a good bit of bulkhead replacement going up the Fly Creek side, back on the east side going up that direction. We replaced right at the fuel dock as well as at the coverage slips and out further west than here, that, that section that you see the pile of sand, that is new going north to, to south and then on out. So, this will actually pretty much put brand-new bulkhead in the entirety of the perimeter. And when I say brand-new, less than about seven, eight years old, which is, I think, just a beneficial thing for us there. Any questions on that? The next one is number 19, is maintenance dredging for Fairhope docks. As you may or may not know, our neighbors across the harbor, the Yacht Club undertook dredging of their slips harbor and, and kind of invited us to join along. They just couldn't understand, we just couldn't join their contract. We have to meet public bid law. So, we, we did, at the request, put out a, a request for bids and we did receive those. And we were able to tag along, Fairhope Yacht Club bared the cost of having the whole, well, we, we bared part of it, but we had a, a complete survey sounding of the complete area. And for our portion, it is described in your map that you should have as Area 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. Now, unfortunately, because we have to follow a process, advertisement, open bids, bring them to you for acceptance, Fairhope Yacht Club has kind of finished up theirs and their solution to sharing the, the channel is they directed their dredge operator to dredge to 45 feet off the end of their docks, which is basically the center line of the channel. They are doing a post-dredge survey, which they're gonna share with us, so we're gonna know our starting point. So, you're probably asking me why the number's funny. Well, when we bid this project, we had bid the inclusion of 100% of the channel, which is Area 6. Well, roughly based upon what the Yacht Club has reported to us, they knocked out somewhere around 45 to 48% of that, that volume there. So, that leaves roughly half for us. So, that, that number in the little estimate that I put together for you. The other thing that you as a council need to understand, that we placed this bid that, that Items 1 or Items 4 through 9, which are Areas 1 through 6 are à la carte, meaning that we can pick all of them as part of the bid, one of them, two of them, three of them, however much you want to do. So, they are à la carte. The only thing that we're gonna pay, if we just do one area to dredge, we're just gonna pay the full freight on the mobilization and demobilization, but it's a volumetric price based upon that. And when the dredge operator completes the work, we will have a post-dredge survey done to verify volumes to pay on. And I kind of, I kind of, kind of gave you a schematic. Based upon what we think we know volume-wise, if you choose, if you chose to, to do the project where we took care of the channel and what is called Area 4, which includes the fuel docks and the majority of the harbor, that's everything from the fuel docks basically going west, including those slips around C docks, the coverage slips, and even the slips further to the west, we estimate that that project would come in around $125,000. If you then said, well, let's do that plus Area 3, that's an incremental increase of about $3,200 and you can see that go down. The one thing to think about, to go from the two areas that we really know we want to do to doing it all is a $25,000 difference right now. And that's just what y'all have to, to consider, what y'all, what y'all want to select in this. But you will note that because the bids were based upon assuming that we were doing 100% of the channel at that time, is that it's at that 175, but we already know that we're gonna spend less than that if half the channel's already been dredged. Any questions?
I have several. So, and maybe you answered it with that last statement. The agenda states 175,09830. The actual memo from DD states 172,9830, which was 3,000 less than what the, so I'm trying to find the actual resolution real quick and see, I don't see a, let's see, the resolution states 175. DD's letter states 172.
It was changed.
Huh?
It was changed. There was a $3,000 error. That memo was actually changed, so I'm not sure why it's showing that.
Yeah, we caught a, there was a mathematical error in the bid tab, so the, the correct number.
On the bid tab, it's 175,098, but then now my third question is your letter that is to, let's see, I believe that's to the mayor. Let me find it again. There is attached an email from you to the mayor on August the 4th. It says the remaining half, the channel plus the fuel docks and adjacent harbors, 126. The additional 24, to do it all or an all-in would bring it to 150.
That is correct.
So, where's the 176 versus 150 coming from?
I understand, we, we bid it as if the channel had not had any dredging done. Now, what we're getting reported from the Fairhope Yacht Club's way of doing their half was they directed their dredge person to dredge half of the channel. Now, we won't know exactly how half it is until we get the, their post-dredging survey, but based upon the information they provided, I calculated the volume in the channel has dropped to 3153 cubic yards from about 7,000, okay? So, that's where my number comes down to 150 because you back that, that cost out.
How confident are you that the bidder's going to somewhat agree with you on that? In other words, should we change the, the resolution to say up to 175,098? Are we gonna fight for that $25,000 there?
Well, here's the beauty about this is one of the, the requirements of the contract is we, before we pay, the final payment is that there has to be a survey that's done by a third party and they recalculate that. So, we have, we have a, a survey before dredging, we'll have a survey after the Fairhope Yacht Club for what they dredged, then he will do his work and then we'll survey again and they calculate the volume. So, this is one of the things that we pay only for what's removed and generally, they never remove 100%. So, you know, those numbers usually always come in a little bit lower than what we bid it at. So, I am very confident that we're, one, we're not gonna exceed 175 and I do not believe if we want to do all six areas, the remaining, including the remaining half of Area 6, I think we're, we're sub 150.
Should we put it, should we change the resolution to up to 150?
I'd be perfectly comfortable with that.
You would be comfortable saying up to 150?
Yeah, not to exceed and, and we can get everything done.
And you're on board doing it all. That makes sense to me if we're already there.
Well, the difference between doing two areas and all six is a little lower than $24,000.
I like Jimmy's thought because y'all have heard me say it a thousand times in here. When you put a number out there miraculously, that number gets met no matter what it is.
Well, this, this is gonna be a measurement from a third party, so there's no, there's no saying I did it. It's either the, it shows it or it doesn't, so.
I guess we could always come back, you could always come back to the body if the 150 doesn't cover it, come back and say, hey, the third party came back and we need another 10 or 20. I hate to even say that, but that's one way to do it.
And I hate the thought of coming back, so I think, I think I can live with 150.
Okay. Make a note of that, so on the, on your, and I guess I should ask, the clerk, Lisa, can we change that? There is a bid of 175,098. I guess, can we say?
Absolutely, because the contract said that you could choose any or all and so...
Well, the 150's all, though.
That's true, but it gives y'all that latitude. I don't think there's any, you know...
I got you. Say a total bid proposal of 150?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed. Total bid proposal, not to exceed. Okay.
And then finally, this is just one of those things that we have to, to deal with. The elevator at the museum did not pass inspection and had some critical maintenance issues that, that were required to be replaced. It is red-tagged right now, meaning that it's out of service and we have an unbudgeted expense to repair it of $17,705.98. We did go out for three quotes. We received two responses and one non-response on that and it is the Otis Elevator Company that came in cheapest. And I understand our service contract is with Tiss and Crump, but they were the higher of the two responsive bids. And this is replacing the travel cable, which is the main mechanism that moves the elevator up and down, the, the key switch, flex hose, and there is some rust that the inspection said had to be remediated, so.
I guess, well, have you finished, Richard?
Yes, sir.
That's pretty much everything. Kim, since you're next, I have some follow-up questions to these, couple of these items. The dredging, number 19, is not a budgeted item?
Correct.
So, do you know where we can find $150,000?
Yes, sir. So, when I, I went back and looked at July sales types and where we are, we're currently with taking sales use and sellers' use types. We're currently 266 over budget as of today's collections. So, and then I looked at in the next two months, if I take the next two months compared to last year and only take 90% of that, being very conservative of where we're gonna land...
Don't tell all these people that.
Um, we're...
Don't tell Richard.
We're estimated to be $1.8 million over what we budgeted for sales types. So, if y'all wanted to do a budget adjustment, we can do a amendment of...
See that health clinic adding rooms already?
We can do a budget amendment of 150,000, just adjust sales types budget and increase the capital improvements in the docks and that would be my way of, you being able to show how you can fund this, being it's unbudgeted.
I would just do it a little piece at a time. Let us think about, that's a lot, that's a lot of money. We don't wanna, we probably need to give a lot of thought to that.
To do a $150,000 budget adjustment?
I would do that. Would y'all agree to that?
Oh, yeah.
And then, well, 100, and you have 17,000 that you can put over there for the elevator repairs, too.
Okay, well, you wanna do a round even of the 175 budget adjustment, increase on sales types and increase the capital improvements, one at the, is that the museum, Welcome Center?
Absolutely. Yep. Yep, let's do that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do we need to change that tonight? Doesn't matter probably. We're not gonna spend it. Yeah, we can do it next meeting. Could you do that, Lisa?
I can add that.
All right. Do you have any items on the, the agenda tonight?
Um, we have the symbol clinic. So, if y'all have any questions on that, just to give some background, Symbol Clinic has currently in Ballin County, the Ballin County Commission has two symbol clinics, one in Robertstown and one in Baymanet. City of Foley was the first symbol clinic and Gulf Shores, the City of Gulf Shores has symbol clinic. And that's just an onsite clinic for your employees that are on your health insurance and you'll see that in there. And I've got with us here is Mike Melody, who is the president of the Symbol Clinic. If y'all have any questions or want some more information, do you have any questions from me or mayor or, and I know Council Burrell and has been involved in meetings for the past, I know, several years of trying to get to this point.
I think, Mike, do you mind? I know it's something that you're proud of and we're proud to partner with you and this has been a long time coming, so I think it's pretty newsworthy and I'd like to educate the members of the audience and the members of the public as to, and the employees and for the department heads here to take back to their employees and tell them what they can expect.
Thank you, Jack. I'm glad to do that. Thank you for the rest of you council members for having me here, Mrs. Mayor. So, the concept of a symbol health clinic is an employer-sponsored clinic where the whole idea behind it is to have a positive impact on the health and well-being of city employees as well as the health and well-being of your, your self-insured health plan. And the idea behind it is that the more people that you give access, ready access to primary care and lifestyle intervention for things such as chronic diseases, mainly for chronic diseases, the, the symbol solution basically is to have engagement of, of your plan members who, who are high-cost claim members and help address gaps in care, medication adherence, and lifestyle intervention. We do that through health coaching, we do that through wellness programs, we do that with, through biometric screenings. We, we hope to be doing a biometric screening of the entire employee population. You can include spouses, independents if you want, spouses if you want. And then there's the cost factor to it. So, it's pretty much a, it's reallocation of money that you're already spending because it's all really coming from your healthcare, health plan dollars. But instead of, so we, you know, Blue Cross is really not in it, so we're not submitting claims to Blue Cross and we'll, we'll bill the city directly. And you sort of cut out Walgreens and all the, all, everyone else and you're getting, you know, you're just getting the meat. You're leaving off the, the tomatoes and the bread and all the condiments. And it's less expensive in terms of the visits and, and to the employees, the idea is particularly for chronic conditions, you don't want to put up any impediments to receiving care for chronic conditions such as co-pays. So, we strongly suggest it's your plan, you can do what you want. We suggest no co-pays for the visits and no co-pays for medications. We dispense medications onsite, prescription medications. These are prepackaged generic medications. We can't fill prescriptions per se. What we can do is we're gonna have a physician or physician extender, such as a physician assistant or nurse practitioner, they can dispense medication to a patient. If you're not an established patient, you can't bring in a prescription and ask us to fill it. So, the only thing we'll be dispensing on, for City of Fairhope will be prepackaged generic medications. So, are there any questions? Yes, sir.
Yes. So, so how would they get a prescription that's just not pre-filled? You said no Walgreens, just the meat.
If you, if you come in and say it's a chronic condition, you, you're diabetic and you need metformin or you may need some insulin, we'll have those in stock.
Right.
We'll have a formulary, a type formulary of about 150 drugs, 160 drugs, most commonly used, and it'll be adjusted based upon the patient population that comes in.
And if you don't have the drug?
We'll get it for you.
We order, you order it, then for them?
Or if it's something, if it's a brand or a specialty, we can still write it and you can go fill it.
Right.
At the drugstore.
Are you, are you hiring nurse practitioners or MDs or what?
We, okay, so the way that works is we would staff it with, with a physician assistant or nurse practitioner with a minimum of five years' experience. Each, each extender, they're called physician extenders, will have a supervising physician. There are certain requirements by the State Board of Medical Examiners that we make them follow, but there's also our own internal rules of engagement, of visiting the clinic, of being readily available, reviewing charts.
I think it's perfect, man. I think it's the way medicine is going, much cheaper. Good job.
And I'll also tell you this before it's all over with. I mean, I think you, I think you're, you yourselves and your plan members will think it's probably the best benefit that they've been given yet and it's something that'll lead to, you know, the, the whole idea is there's savings, what we call diversion savings, which is instead of going to urgent care, they come to the clinic, you know, and, or instead of going to the ER with a non-emergency issue, they come to the clinic. So, that's what we call the diversion savings and we'll report those to Kim on, on a yearly basis and working with COPS Allen, we're very used to working with COPS Allen. But then there's also the trend savings. And the trend savings is when people get healthier, they're using, they have fewer catastrophic events, they, they're using fewer specialists, they have fewer surgeries. And so, you'll see that and that was in our proposal and you'll see those savings, you know, in two or three years, they'll start piling up.
Preventive medicine.
So, department heads, a takeaway for all of you in here and most of you are in here tonight is that when you're recruiting that new employee, you know, you have a new incentive for that person to come to work for the City of Fairhope. You have convenient, affordable, almost no-wait healthcare.
I didn't even get into that.
Right there, right, right next door to your office. Now, you might be the one, the type that says, man, I wanna go to Spanish Fort, go to the doctors where I can get away from the office for a while, but that's gonna cost you in time off ultimately. But when you have this clinic that's right next door and they can dispense medicine for, you, you may be, you wanna, you may wanna meet your spouse, your children there and it's just gonna be right by your office so you could be there with them for appointments with no wait time. You don't have to take additional time off. If you're on these maintenance drugs, I mean, you're gonna be a healthier, happier employee. I mean, for your supervisors and you have a healthier, happier employee, your life's gonna be much better. So, it's a quality of life for, you know, it saves the city money, the studies show, but it's a quality of life for our employees and we think that it's gonna help you improve you and your employees' quality of life as well.
And we'll be doing, if you want, we will be doing COVID testing, we can do COVID vaccinations, we'll be certified, your clinic will be certified to do that, there's a state certification that you have to go through. And I've also prepared, have not presented them, but I've prepared reciprocal usage agreements for the other, Baldwin County, I don't think there's gonna be a problem there, so that'll be Robertstown, Baymanet, you'll get used, City of Foley, they'll be onboard, and then Gulf Shores.
So, what that means is if you have an employee that lives, say, closer to Foley?
They can go.
Then they do Fairhope, they can go to the Foley clinic, the symbol clinic there as opposed to...
We'll have all the finances all straightened out with Kim so that when someone from Gulf Shores comes to your clinic, you know, that bill goes to Gulf Shores, that's all taken care of.
All right. So, this, this is something that I know that I've been talking about... Right. So this is something that I know that I've been talking about for.
2017.
Yeah, at least five or six years.
Might have been 2016.
Yeah.
The first proposal.
Yeah, that's about right. So anyway, Mayor, do you want to comment?
I did. I just wanted to say I was motivated to get this going because I actually was able to use the clinic at, when I worked for Riviera in Foley. And it's a great service. I mean, I'm on a couple of maintenance drugs a month, cholesterol and like thyroid medicine. And I was able to just call them within 24 hours. I could swing by and pick it up. It was a 90-day dosage of it. I mean, just really easy to work with. Go in for your, you know, cold sinus infections, whatever it might be. But it was very convenient and just, like you said, almost no wait time. And it's just, it's really convenient. I think the employees are really going to see it as a huge benefit.
And going back to how quickly you can do that, the quicker you can get help, the quicker, for those of you that have many people not able to report to work right now, COVID is a different situation, I understand, because there's quarantine requirements. But, you know, just your coughs and colds and your, your average flu, though, they take people away from you when you're in the middle of a big project. And you need those people back, you know, working. I think that it would, it would go a long way towards helping everyone be, be productive. Anything else, Mike? Did we leave anything out? Anything else?
No, I didn't spend enough time probably on the convenience and that.
What, what, oh, so this will be located in the Pecan Avenue building? I said, you know, near most of your offices or near, for those of you that work at City Hall, a short drive down to the warehouse or short of the warehouse. What is the anticipated opening date right now?
It's entirely depending upon the restoration of the, the building.
Are we shooting for January 1?
Yes. So we're hopefully, we're through some electrical issues, but we're hoping to hand it over to the person who got the bid by the end of this week. So and then that, that means that if we can have bids to y'all the first meeting September, we can go. And the good news is all the work's underneath, underneath the new roof. So whether it does not affect the contractor's build to work.
Right. Let me also, one of the most common questions we get, I think is very important, is this does not preclude you from going to your regular doctor. If you choose to go to your doctor, you can do so. But we hope that you'll see the value in this. And, you know, you may not want to go there for heart surgery, but you'll see the value in going there for your routine visits, okay?
Yeah, the incentivize would be no co-pay to the Cymbal Clinic versus, and if it's you, you don't have to punch the clock. You can just walk over there, drive over there. You're there about 15, 20 minutes.
I mean, 30 on the outside if you're a new patient.
Yeah.
Unless it's something complicated.
But if you want to continue to go to your regular doctor, that's your decision. But you still have your co-pays.
Yeah, you may come out of there with a savings of no co-pay. And then you may get a 90-day supply of your maintenance prescription, which may be, even if it's only $5 a month, is another $15 savings. So each trip could potentially save, I'm just giving you one example, but a $50 savings for one trip.
And it could save, what I look at as time convenience is you may have to leave at, you know, 2:00, the end of your day of going to your doctor in Spanish Fork, if that's what you choose, versus you walk next door. And you've got bronchitis, you're fine. They'll give you a little shot and say, go on back to work.
Right.
Yeah, I think it'd help with compliance as well. The easier it is for someone to get to the doctor, the more they will go to the doctor. Studies have shown that.
It's not unusual for us to have greater than 95. Probably our average is 85, 90%.
That's correct.
Unique employees, I mean, that, that use, percent of employees.
What's the, what's the national average for the workforce? Do you know?
I don't know. I don't know that number. I know the, that they will use this clinic.
That's pretty, that sounds like a pretty high number. Cory, do you know what the compliance rate is nationally?
No. No. Not anywhere.
I'd get it for you, though.
All right. Yeah, Google, right. All right. Any more questions? All right. Kim, have you got anything else on the agenda tonight?
Thank you.
Want to talk, thank you, Mike. Pat?
I'll give you a quick update. The ADA project is coming along a little faster now, thanks to the help of Public Works, who's been hugely incremental in helping us get moving. The Jumbotron, I'm told, will start Monday. They will come in and set poles 18 feet deep beginning Monday. So hopefully by the end of the week, we'll see some good progress on that. But the projects coming along, the stadium's looking great. It looks better every day. So I think we'll meet the finish line.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. Jason?
I don't think I have anything. I'm just ending that. Well, that's number 10. Mayor may want to go over that. The only updates that I have, other than all the hard work the guys are doing, keep water flowing and sewer going to where it needs to go and not where it doesn't need to go. But I'm sure you all talked or heard about brown water today in town. We had a lot of brown water complaints around town this morning. And it's, you all did the ride around with me and we got to talk. You know, now we're going into dry season and everybody's watering grass. And we're sending out notifications, trying to get people to water at different times instead of one that peaked demand. And peaked demand, of course, you all know, 6 to 9 in the mornings and in the afternoons from 3 to around 7. With that, they're using more water than we can produce right now. So by that, the heavy area that we have that does irrigation is north of town. And that's where all the water's being pulled and it reverses the flow here in town. Stirs lines up and there, there's your brown water. So these projects that you'll see coming up that we got out for bid, you know, that's another reason we need the water. Okay. But we're doing the best we can. We're doing some flushing. Just when I say flushing lightly around town, just opening hydrants and pulling the water back and for it to clear up. And that's worked very well for us today. We had, all around town, we had the water cleared up right after lunch. So the guys are working hard and they take great pride in what we do. So we've been wrecked over the coals pretty hard on social media. But understand the message that we get across, the water is safe to drink. We meet or exceed all federal and state regulatory standards. The discolored water is manganese stains and it stains the water. And we can, we test water daily for manganese and iron and we're well below the limit. So this isn't a static issue. It's not a health issue.
Jason, who's going to cover, Mike, are you going to cover the ordinance on item 10, the sanitary sewer design? Who's going to cover that tonight when that's introduced? Okay, will you, will both of you then cover it when, when we get to that tonight?
I mean, if you want to talk about it now, you can talk about it now, too.
I don't mind talking about it a little bit now.
Okay. Basically, there is not territory for, for sewer service. And so this is just to make sure that if we, if we had an outside sewer service that came into our, our territory or our city limits, that we would make sure that they meet all of our standards.
Bypassing such, does that?
Correct.
Almost give the impression that we are allowing it?
I don't, I mean, we're not allowing it. It hasn't happened. But we also want to be prepared. I mean, we do not want, you know, anybody coming in to our ETJ or corporate limits or our planning jurisdiction or our corporate limits right now where we do not have, that they don't, do not meet our standards. This is just preventative.
I just, I don't know. I wish, I wish there was kind of some kind of caveat there that.
I think this has to do with the new rules that we are approach or encroached upon right now with the SB 107.
I don't know if it's that or if it's, it's that another sewer company is trying to encroach upon our jurisdiction right now. I think that, I don't know if that's, I think that's mutually inclusive of SB 107.
I do think that's a part of it. There have been other municipalities in Ballin County who have, who have also passed the same type of ordinance in, in Ballin County. So, I mean, again, it's just a preventative measure to make sure that we are protecting the citizens of Ballin County when they, when somebody else comes in and builds, that they have to build to Fairhope standards.
Do you see, is this so pressing as such that we should pass this tonight? Can it wait two weeks?
It can wait two weeks.
Okay.
I mean, I know y'all prefer that on ordinance.
We do, but I just also, if you know of something pending that, you know. Okay. All right. Chief Ellis?
Good evening. Tonight, we're starting a certified volunteer firefighter course out at our station, too, training our firefighters to firefighter one standard. So I'll be headed out there in a few minutes. And I didn't know if anyone, we've also got item 20 on the agenda, the headsets for the fire trucks. I didn't know if anyone had any questions for me for that.
If you could just explain, I, I.
Sure.
What, yeah.
So the headsets are hearing protection. They're also intercoms for the firefighters in the trucks. When we're in the trucks right now, there's the sirens we have to deal with. You got to shout at your, at your guys to tell them what you want to do. They're listening for radio instructions, things like that. These headsets, we put them in the new truck, but they cut down, there's an intercom system that lets you just talk like we're talking right now. You don't have to raise your voice. It cuts out the majority of the background noise. The driver and the officer of the truck will be able to talk to, to the dispatcher or the officer in charge. And the other, other firefighters will be able to hear the, the instructions. It just makes things a whole lot easier in general.
Chief, this was budgeted, was budgeted for 47, 775 and it came in at?
Yes, sir.
About 25% more than that?
Sunbelt, Sunbelt came in at 40, or I'm sorry, I believe it was at what, 59?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I don't know why they, it was so much higher, honestly. Just.
So Kim, do we have impact fees available to spend?
Yes, because this would be made.
Yes, sir. You're yes, ma'am. That's, that's correct.
Do we have enough to spend and then still have enough to spend what we want to budget for the fire department's capital improvements next year? Our capital purchases, I should say. I'm still a little bit miffed why the, the bid came in 12,000. I mean, that 47, 774, oh, two, that's not somebody's guess. That's somebody put, pinned to paper and came up with that number. So.
Yes, sir.
We're being asked to spend 25% more because it's a local company or we didn't get other bids? I mean.
There was two or three other, we put it out to bid and I believe there was other bids. I just, Sunbelt was the lowest one, actually, with everything coming back.
I'm looking at Marcus and Lisa now. If it comes back over $50,000, does that, do we not have to see the bids? If it was budgeted originally at under 50,000, I don't even know if it's a Public Works project, but how does that, if it comes back at 50-something thousand dollars, do we not have to?
15,000 was the limit?
15,000 is the limit. Do we need to see the other numbers?
Were they not in there?
Uh, no. I'm just not seeing a justification for a number of that.
Does it say safe source?
I don't see, but I see one number. See one sheet. I see two, I see one set of bids and two set of no bids. Or there's no other numbers on there.
There's only one bid.
Okay, so it could be the lowest responsible bidder then? Okay. One bid was received. Yeah, okay. I see it now. All right.
All right. Thank you.
That answers that question. Okay. Advertised for 16 days, sent to 10 vendors and viewed by 83 others. Okay. All right. All right. Paige?
Good evening, y'all. I just wanted to give y'all an update. We finally settled our Hurricane Sally insurance claim for a couple of our city facilities. And I wanted to give hats off to Lisa Hanks because she went back at them after we got our initial claim back. And we were like, you know, this isn't good enough. And so Lisa pressed on and pressed on. And Richard also helped with the wording in there, too. So we actually more than doubled what they initially provided us for that. So y'all will see some requests for bids coming out. We'll be getting a new roof on the next center as well as we are going to be replacing some exterior glass and windows, new ceiling tiles, replacing carpet. So we're really excited to get that building back up to where it was. So anyways, thank you, Lisa, for that. I really appreciate that. A email came through this morning and we were doing a happy dance. So.
Yeah.
Anyways, thank y'all.
All right. Thank you, Paige.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good afternoon.
I wasn't sure if you just were happy to be here, if you were going to give a report tonight.
Yes, sir. In the gas department, I'd like to start off by saying, reminding everybody, most of you know, but Terry Holman is still in the hospital. It's, Mayor's been giving everybody updates. He's texted me a couple of times, trying to get off oxygen, but still can't. So just keep him in your thoughts and prayers right now until he can come back to work. We're doing what we can. We'd like to thank all the council members. I know Jay and Jimmy are with me and Wes. I thank Kevin and Cory, Danielle, Rob, and Terry. And then Jack rode with Wes the other day. So I know everybody's busy. Y'all have y'all's full-time jobs. We appreciate y'all's time coming out, riding around, seeing a little more of the infrastructure. A couple shout-outs to some people at the city. Since Terry's been gone, we've been having to jump in. The budgets do. They've been trying to get a lot of information at the last minute. Island and Kim have been enormous help to us. We couldn't have done it without them. We have blown their phones up pretty much every day, all day long, trying to make sure we have everything right for y'all for the budget. And also, I was on vacation. So not only did Terry is in the hospital, I was on vacation last week. So we had several people, Wes and Mark in the gas department, that stood up, that stepped up and took care of a lot of things that usually they're not asked to do or have not been involved in. So it was pretty stressful last week, especially for Wes, trying to get job descriptions in and do a lot of stuff that we haven't been a part of. But Terry's been out. So appreciate everybody's patience. Wes, do you have anything?
I have.
But other than that, everything's going good. Putting gas pipe in the ground and trying to keep everybody happy. As far as the agenda, I don't think we have anything on it.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Paige.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Bobby?
Counsel, nice to be here tonight. We started greens renovation on 6 and 11. So they're torn up. We're playing temporary greens and that's been well-received. We took the eight-inch cup and put it in the temporary greens. It's been a lot of fun. In fact, everybody said they liked it. So we try to create a nice atmosphere out there. Golf course greens are back in real good shape. We had a great outing from Pensacola today. What's called the Sand Crab Seniors came and had a great time. So we're, we're in good shape out there, but things are going well. We do have a few issues. I do try to handle the best I can. We have, still have a lot of bike riders, four-wheelers, people in private golf carts, joggers, runners on the golf course. But we do have those ordinances in place. So I'm trying to be the police officer out there on the afternoons. But other than that, things are going very well. So thank you.
Thank you. Travis or Jeremy?
Good evening. I don't necessarily have anything to talk about tonight, but I did talk to the police chief before. There is. There is item, I should have started, that's why.
Yeah, I spoke to her, that is-
You did, about the dispatch position?
Yeah, I'm trying to find, it is item thirteen.
Correct. That is, uh, we're gonna have someone out on maternity about this same time, so chief was really worried about, you know, not having enough dispatchers to fill positions. So, we're just asking, and it may shake out that this doesn't even come into play, depending on how quickly we hire someone, but we just want to have that extra position to hire and train before the dispatcher retires, so.
I did, I did talk to the chief, actually, when I was driving down here this evening, and she did say that once the hires are made and the, you have the one dispatcher retiring, that that position will not be filled. So, we might want to just add a sentence to the resolution that says that once the dispatcher retires, that that position is defunded. That way, you don't have an additional funded position.
Correct.
Right. I'll probably add that to the resolution.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Travis. Jeremy?
Good afternoon, everyone. Quick update on Morphy. We're hoping to see some equipment come rolling in this week to get started on that site. Nickel, Valana, told you about the regulator issue ends up. Siemens has never seen an issue like this. Welcome to Fairhope. So, they're gonna have to take that back to the factory, try to get that fixed, so we're still limping, limping by with Valana. We did put one of our older regulators back in there in case we do need that site. We're probably gonna put some load on it this week, just to make sure everything is holding good until we can get that regulator back. So, a couple things on the agenda tonight. Nine, you guys noticed that not emergency disconnect fee, after talking with other municipalities around, this is either in their permit charges and stuff, or they just charged us separate. This is kind of recoup some of the money for after-hours pay, callouts that we do for having to cut, not emergency services back on, and also to keep it down. Somebody wants to cut a tree in their yard, we gotta go cut a service loose. It's just, it's that type of ordinance, so. You got any questions on that? We're under what most companies charge for that also, so. And then, we've got twenty, what do I have, twenty-two? That's the triple single reclosures, is gonna help our system be more reliable. We'll put this on the lines, on a pole. It's budgeted, so it came under budgeted, too, under budget also, so it was pretty impressive. Thought it would be more, but these things are pretty, are pretty complicated, but they're, they're neat the way they work. So, if there's a fault down line, that thing will open and close, like we're gonna put one on the hospital feeder, which we did have a blink on yesterday morning, I think, I believe, or early, yeah, yesterday morning. And that was a, it didn't open and close the breaker, it did open and close the breaker and operate it, but it did not open it. It was a lightning arrester that faulted out, so that was one that blinked. But if it was something that could cause an outage, this would open that, and it would keep the hospital on. Everything beyond that would be off until we can get it fixed. So, we've got some places in town on our system that we could definitely use this, so that's what those are. Twenty-three is the charging station, so you guys know about the EV charging stations that we're gonna get, and this is just purchases. Anything else? Man yard.
Wyatt. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Jessica?
Good evening. The only thing I have tonight on the agenda would be parking authority appointment. I ask that you very seriously consider making that. We have five members on the parking authority right now. We normally need seven, so to get a quorum, we really need to add more members. And I know that the city attorney can attest to the fact that we have quite an agenda of things that we need this, this committee to meet about and make decisions on, so I'll be happy to answer any questions about that or anything else you may have.
Who'd you bring? Who'd you bring with you tonight?
Uh, so, that is my eight-year-old. She's here with her last summer school lesson on local government tonight. We came directly from Meet the Teacher, so.
All right. Good luck this year.
Thank you. Anything?
Okay. Well, Jessica, you might want to update the council on that, you know, that we worked on that Marina-
Yeah.
-grant application.
I'll be happy to. So, we do have an opportunity to apply for a grant with the EDA. It's for a tourism grant. They've made quite a lot of money available for that purpose. We were looking, obviously, at some recreation land for that, but we have a, kind of a shovel-ready or at least a engineered plan right now for the Marina. I think that you guys adjusted that maybe about a year, year or so ago. At that point, we were applying for a grant for about two million dollars. We are actually looking at applying for a grant for the entire project amount, which is coming in a little over five million dollars right now. Councilman Burrell and I spent some time on Friday afternoon adjusting the numbers to where they need to be for right now. I suspect that we'll be seeing you again with that full plan in the, maybe the next meeting or in two meetings. We've got a little bit of time to get that developed, but we want to go ahead and get that in there and be as competitive as possible. When we had a meeting with the EDA about this, what they said was, we want your high-dollar projects. We want to see things that will make a splash in your community for tourism and to kind of help get in there and get those tourism dollars back up, get those recreation dollars up. And so, this upgrade at the Marina would do that for us. It would make a, a big difference for us. But I do anticipate being able to show you that full plan again, as we have done previously in the next meeting or two.
And, and while I'm thinking about it, Jessica, we might want to revisit that one more time and talk about maybe a breakwater or something that would prevent the siltation of the basin there. We might, it might be a place to put that in. We might want to talk, talk to the mayor about this briefly today. We may want to talk about, can we add in there improvements to our municipal pier Marina, such as dredging or bulketing or breakwaters there to prevent that from silting? Because, you know, you talk about an economic development. If boats could safely traverse in and out of that-
Certainly.
-it'd be a, be a really big help. But I just don't know if we can do both.
Right, and I do worry that it might be like site-specific, so if you begin to break it into multiple sites, it might be a, a problem, but certainly something we can look into. It's an incredible opportunity for us. There is a match, I believe it's a twenty-five percent match, but as we've worked through this, it looks like that twenty-five percent match for us will be met through labor here and installation that would be done by our city employees. So, hopefully, we'll be able to bring that back to you to look at. But it's a very exciting opportunity for us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Eric? Mike, did I skip you? You've got a busy, you've got a busy night, don't worry.
I just want to let you, I have item number fourteen on the agenda, which is the Baldwin County All-Hazard Mitigation Plan. FEMA required, starting in two thousand, to be eligible for reimbursement, that jurisdictions have to have a mitigation plan of how they handle these hazards. Historically, it's been Baldwin County. This year, it actually SARS helped us coordinate it, and it was Mobile, Baldwin, and I believe, Escambia Counties. So, what this is, is once we have a resolution from each of the municipalities, they're sent to the county, they do a resolution, and then it's sent to FEMA. FEMA's already reviewed the plan, and they are good with it. So, it's a tie-up item that we've got to do about every four or five years.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, Mike? Well, yeah, we might, let's, let's go over some of those final adoptions again, if you don't mind.
So, the three items that we have on tonight are three final adoptions. The first one is amending the CBD overlay for short-term rentals to be allowed. We've had the request for a few zoning changes to go to a B-four zoning, and our short-term rental ordinance doesn't contemplate B-four zoning at all currently. Don't know why that was left out. And the biggest area that we have for short-term rental requests is in the CBD area. So, this proposal is to allow for the short-term rentals in any zoning district that's inside of the CBD area. The next item is also in the CBD, and that is to require a minimum of fifty percent of the gross floor area of any of the mixed-use buildings to contain commercial square footage. We've had some applications, as you've seen here recently, that have come in where we require for mixed use to be residential and commercial use, and we're seeing a very small percentage of commercial on that ground floor. And being the central business district, wanting to make sure that we don't lose that commercial component that's on the ground floor. That's our storefronts, people walking down the sidewalks, getting in and out of some of these businesses that we want to keep there and want to provide area for. And then, the item number seven that we have tonight is a zoning change off of one-eight-one. It's going from RA to B-four. Currently, it's a L-shaped lot that has two road frontages, so as a condition of approval, staff has where we're going to require a replat to show what those setback lines will be. So, it would be set in stone from here on out, not any confusion on where the billable area is on those lots.
Mike, on the, on number six, on the minimum of fifty percent gross floor area, one of the things that we've seen developers do is to try to, you know, put a lot of parking on, on the first floor, which is great, because we want them to add parking, but it shouldn't be counted as commercial space. If we pass that ordinance tonight, the way it's written, how do we know, how do we send a clear message that parking is precluded from that commercial space? And I'll give you an example. Let's say somebody put parking on the first floor of a building and decided they would charge their tenants a dollar a month to park there, and therefore, therefore making it a commercial. I mean, do we need to strengthen that up and add a sentence that specifically states?
The parking lot for them to come in for zoning compliance, if they're meeting their required parking, and in the CBD currently, it's only required for residential use, that would have to be a site plan that showed a paid parking lot, and that's not even contemplated in our zoning ordinance as an allowed use, period, right now. So, I believe that would have to be either go to the Board of Adjustments for a use not contemplated for, but certainly at this point, it's not a use that I don't believe would be supported by at the staff level.
It does say the ground floor of the building or of a building.
Well, but, yeah, but ground floor of the building, there's under, there's, you know, there's a lot of parking on the-
Ground floor.
Ground floor.
There could be, and with the fifty percent being commercial space, the number of parking spots that they're gonna have to provide for is also gonna go down. Instead of having five units on the ground floor, which require five additional spaces and then eight hundred square foot of commercial-
What we don't want them doing is using that commercial space to satisfy their parking requirement by putting more parking on the first floor and calling that commercial.
Right. We, we wouldn't consider a parking lot a commercial use.
Okay, where's that written? That, that's what I'm getting to. Where's that written?
It's, it's not contemplated by our zoning ordinance, therefore, it's not a use that's allowed for, period. If you look at the different zoning charts that we have for allowed uses, either by right or on appeal or by special exception, paid parking is not in any of those-
What about unpaid parking?
That, you can only have a certain percentage over of your required parking spaces for any commercial project.
I'm just trying to avoid down the road.
Yes, sir. Oh, no, I completely understand. We've looked at several different measures of what could be considered commercial, trying to throw things out there.
Sometimes when we try to simplify things, we create problems. People want to keep it simple, but sometimes when you're very explicit in your ordinance, this is not allowed for the consideration of what is commercial, there's no, you can take that to a judge, and there's, it's black and white.
And also, I would say for being that it's in the, or for the CBD, majority of all the projects that come in that are a mixed-use project are going to trigger a site plan review. So, we're going, this body here will be looking at all of those projects moving forward, rather than not to approve that regardless. We don't have very many projects in the CBD that can come in, because they're looking to take up all the, all the square footage of that lot that they can get to that height limit that they're allowed to be, and that's almost always going to trigger a site plan review, no matter what, for commercial business inside the CBD.
You satisfied?
I have a question about the renters. Can you explain that a little bit about the renting in the, in the B-three?
For the short-term rentals?
Yeah, short-term rental. Is that residential or is that office space or is that?
That is a short, short-term rental is going to be your residential use. Going in, currently, our short-term rental ordinance, you can't rent out anything that is zoned R-one or R-two, for example, anymore, for any more times than once in a thirty-day period to be considered short-term. So, it's looking at long-term rentals, monthly basis is what's behind, kind of the steering behind that. So, short terms for a commercial property, there is nothing that excludes them from short-term business rentals, but you're not gonna lease out a building for commercial purposes for a week. But for, if it's a residential, residential use is allowed in the CBD, is allowed in the city of Fairhope, but for a area zoned B-four or B-two, there are restrictions that the short-term rental ordinance that we have restricts that right now. But B-four zoning, that sounds a little confusing, but the B-four zoning doesn't allow it, period, anywhere and doesn't exclude it anywhere.
I know that residential is allowed in the CBD, is, you know, we have some-
Correct.
R-two, maybe?
We, there are a handful of R-two properties.
We have a handful of R-two properties in the CBD.
Yes, sir.
Does this ordinance regarding the fifty percent of commercial space prevent that from ever occurring again? Let's say I want to build a two-story house downtown in the CBD, and it's zoned R-two. Do I have to make my first floor commercial?
No, sir. The fifty percent is if you're, if you're zoned R-two, an allowed use isn't mixed use for what it's zoned.
Does it say that specifically?
It says that in the zoning ordinance itself, and the allowed uses for R-two, you're only, you're allowed single-family dwelling, you know, you're not allowed commercial units, uses on that property.
What I read this to say is in the central business district, hereby amended to add the following, a minimum fifty percent of the gross floor area on the ground floor of a building in the CBD shall be dedicated to commercial uses. I don't see it says where it's, if it's a mixed use.
Mixed use wouldn't be allowed on an R-two, or a commercial would not be allowed on R-two, period.
I still say, I don't know, the way I, the way I read this, this, this doesn't specify what the underlying zoning is. It outlaws, it, it says fifty percent must be commercial space on the first floor.
And that's definitely not the intent for a resident, for a resident-
I missed the last meeting where it was introduced, but I brought this up to Hunter in the work session, I believe, in the, in the prior meeting, that I was really concerned that it's an unintended consequence. I almost feel like it needs to say in a, in a mixed use setting, but it doesn't say that. It just says in a building in the CBD.
And that's certainly, I remember Hunter discussing this two meetings ago about the, whether it was mixed use or residential, but if you're to build a, if the use doesn't allow for a mixed use, we can't make a single-family residential dwelling unit fifty percent commercial on the ground floor if commercial is not allowed, period, on that zone piece of property.
Now, I hear what you're saying, but-
They would have to come in for a zoning change.
When somebody goes to build a house next door to a business, and that businessperson next door says, I'm going to this ordinance, and it says it's not allowed, you must do it. They're gonna, it's gonna be hard to argue that with that, that's very descriptive there.
But it's also very descriptive that R-two doesn't allow that type of use, period. So, they wouldn't be able to-
Saying, I, I'm almost, I think this is making it obsolete. Y'all need to, I, I could vote on it tonight, because I believe in what this is, the, what you're trying to achieve, but I, I really think it needs to be looked at and make sure that we're not preventing that in, in, in such an area where you could build a residence, or you could say, we're not gonna allow anymore, I mean.
Right.
Because it's the CBD.
Also, we can certainly look at this, you know, if we go ahead and vote on this tonight, we can look at this, you know, amongst some other possible changes, if you have any-
I think we might, we might want to ask the city attorney to look at it.
And see if that's causing a-
To see what it-
Last thing we want to do is cause a complete discrepancy-
Exactly.
-or a conflict inside the zoning ordinance itself. We do our best to try to-
Yeah.
-remedy any of those conflicts when we come across them.
We're gonna go through, and we're gonna start trying to clean up all of our ordinances as well, under the comprehensive plan. That's part of it. You know, I'm not trying to be a fly in the wind, but I, I, we've just seen too many of these things.
I completely understand. I completely understand.
All right.
Any questions on any of the other items that we have tonight?
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
Corey, you missed committee updates. Do you have any committee updates?
No, no, sir.
Okay. I think Andy didn't show up during this time, did he? Okay, let's go back to the agenda then. I think we're through. Did I miss any department heads? I see several employees in here. Did I miss anybody? Okay. All right, let's go back through the agenda really quick and see if we missed anything. Mike's going to cover five, six, and seven. Who wants to speak if we have questions about the application for the franchise agreement for the pop-up picnics? Lisa or Mayor? It's not customary that we, I'm going to allow you to, we have time. You want, you want to give us a rundown on that? Are you Monica?
Yes.
Okay, Monica.
So the way it works is we do pop-up picnics and we would like to propose to the City of Fairhope for the franchise agreement because we can't do them on city or state property. So we haven't been doing them up here, but the way we do it is we book, we book customers and we set up a whole picnic setup, so tables, decor. We have catered food and we do water and sparkling water as well, and the customers get it for two hours and we have them, we have liability insurance and we're, sorry, I'm really nervous.
You shouldn't be.
Well, I'm really nervous.
We just always drill the planning department, that's cool.
Okay, well, I'm just really nervous, and this is a terrible pitch.
We like picnics.
Well, good, I hope we can throw you one, but it's a full picnic setup, it's for two hours. We feel it would be great for the City of Fairhope. Honestly, we've been moving the customers of Fairhope down to Orange Beach because I have a condo down there that we can do them on, on private land, and so there's nowhere to do them up here because I won't do them on city or state property. So that's why I applied for the franchise agreement, so we can start doing them up here for the City of Fairhope.
And it's only at, you're only asking to use the Magnolia Beach Park, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. What about garbage pickup? I mean, do the guests do that? Do you do that?
We do that, so we clean it all up, so we usually, I mean, always, we always leave it better than we found it. I'm usually picking up the garbage there before, when we get there, so we bring our own garbage bags, we take all of the garbage with us, and we throw it all away.
Do y'all have any questions, council?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Jeremy covered item nine. Jason and the mayor covered ten. Councilman Martin, there's a vote to appoint you to serve as the city council's representative to fill the board of vacancy on the Community Action Agency of South Alabama. And some, some may ask, why, why do we have to have a council vote? It's because the Community Action Agency wanted a letter approved by the city government, so that would require an official action to, to sign that letter. So do you want to comment on that, Corey?
No, I'm just looking forward to it. I mean, Community Action, I think, is a good agency and something that I think we should be involved in, kind of gets us more connected to what's going on in the community.
Looking forward to it, assuming you get enough votes to get appointed to this.
Yeah, that's mighty presumptive over there, Councilman Martin.
It's a shame, I think, that's the French saying. It was Jack's idea, well, you can have it.
I think Jason's vying for the position there.
Nothing. You can do it.
Nothing.
Step right on it. Yeah, you know, step on it, brother.
Pointing out a procedure, that's all I was doing.
I'm, I'm just pointing out the obvious.
Okay, I think Richard covered item twelve, the bids for the overhead doors came in, they came back with a higher cost. Thirteen, we covered that, and I'm going to make a quick change to that resolution. So on item thirteen, just remember, I'm going to add a line into that resolution that says that once the dispatcher retires, their position will be defunded. So that's so that we don't have an additionally funded position. Item fourteen, Eric covered that. Kim and Mike covered item fifteen, and they'll be here for questions. Mike, are you going to stick around for the meeting? Okay. Let's see, Richard, you had covered the 2000, that was a reduction in 16, correct?
Correct.
Okay, you're on hand for that, you've already covered that. Let's see, who covered that? Was that you that covered 17, Richard? Who was that?
That's our NRCS, right?
Okay, I believe you covered 18, you covered 19, and number 19 will be just edited to say with a total bid proposal not to exceed $150,000. And we're going to have a resolution at the next meeting to adjust the budget for that. Chief Ellis covered item 20. We had only received one bid. We do have impact fees to cover that. Mailing Machine is going to cover that. Should we have a question? Kim, is that you?
I'm Jeff.
You want to give us like 30-second overview on that so we don't have to go through it?
Who wants Jeff to do it?
Who?
Jeff.
Jeff? Jeff, are you here? Jeff Montgomery? No, Joe? Kim? It defaults to you, I guess. You want to come? Yeah, come back up so we can, so we can hear you, please.
That is just going to be an update for the mailing machine we currently have here at City Hall to go another three years. Do y'all have any questions? I can probably shoot Jeff a message.
How does that monthly rate compare to what we're paying now?
It's, I'd have to go back and look at it to tell you what it is compared to, but it looked online when I looked at the green sheet.
Where is that used, Kim?
At City Hall, you know, in the little room that goes, has the copier?
Yeah.
The machine that's on that back wall, and you have cubbies above it.
How often is that used? I mean, that's an 18, that's a $19,000 a year lease.
No, that's for three years.
Oh, that's for three years, okay.
Yeah, that's the total for three years. That's daily, all the mail that goes out of City Hall, all the mail that goes out of City Hall is run through that machine, postage is put, and then we have our, our courier runner person goes around and gathers all the mail for the city, comes back here, puts posters on it, goes to the post office.
Okay. All right. Any questions about that? Okay, all right, thanks, Kim. All right, Jeremy covered item 22 already, and he also spoke to item 23, which that is fully reimbursable. And I think, Mayor, do you want to talk a little bit more about that when we get to that, or you want to do it? We got a few minutes now, do you want to talk about that now?
So these are for the charging stations that we're going to be putting out here in Civic Center Parking Lot, along with the ones that are going to go in the parking deck, and that is funded through AMEA. So actually, I think our grant amount with AMEA is $59,000, so it should cover this whole amount of those charging stations.
How's the charging station work?
So the charging station, they're charge points, charging stations, and basically, they have a credit card reader, or debit card reader on the, on the charging station. So you're able to just swipe your card and you're able to, you pay for your, your power that way. The ones here in the parking lot, we're going to have solar panels, a solar canopy, so hopefully, you can use solar power, we'll capture that, or they also have a transformer attached to them, so we can power them electrically.
And that's like a, it's like a generic plug for an electric vehicle?
It is, and there's different models of electric vehicles. Sorry, I don't have those notes with me, but this, this will be a universal adapter.
That's what I was, that's the word I was looking for.
Universal adapter.
Yeah, okay, very good. All right. Mayor, you want to cover item 25 and 26?
Yes.
And we're going to give you an opportunity to discuss this during the meeting, too.
Sure. These are resolutions regarding the employees and the American Rescue Fund, our American Rescue Plan funding, where we are able to offer, offer premium pay, is how it's titled in the, in the plan, to employees who worked during the pandemic, so that's for employees who worked March 1st, 2020, through March 31st, 21. We are asking for full-time employees to get $500, part-time employees to get $250, and seasonal employees will get $125. That's regardless of vaccination, that's just anybody who worked during March 1st to March 31st, 21, they will get that money. The, on number 26, the resolution is that we are asking for, is that employees who are vaccinated on or before September 10th, that they will basically also get an incentive pay for the vaccination, and that's full-time employees will be $500, part-time employees $250, and seasonal employees $125. I will tell you that the past month has been challenging at best in the city. We, to date, have had more than 30 employees out with COVID. That's primarily in just a few departments. So as y'all know, the rate that Fairhope is growing, how busy our departments are, and when you take employees out of those departments, three to four employees out of a single department, it is almost impossible to keep up. If they are not vaccinated, most of them have to quarantine for 14 days, some of them are getting very sick. We just spoke earlier about an employee that we have in the hospital, he's on his 15th day in the hospital. So we feel like by offering this incentive for vaccination, that we are encouraging employees to get vaccinated. They still have a choice, we're not mandating it by any means, and we will be respectful of their, their decision. But one thing I will tell you is that it is proven scientifically, and you can, if you're on, if you ever talk to a hospital, right now, Thomas Hospital has quite a few COVID patients, 92% of those patients in there are not vaccinated, if they have been, if they've tested COVID positive. So it will shorten your time out of work, it will make, hopefully, you will not be hospitalized, and you're just not as sick when you have the vaccination. So we are asking for this incentive for the employees and hope that the council will consider it.
I think there'll be more comments during the meeting on that as well. Okay, council, do you have any more final comments? I'm going to adjourn us for about five minutes before we need to reconvene for the council meeting. Any more comments? All right, we'll see you back in about six minutes.